Welcome to podcast number seven, I believe, with North Georgia Advocate. I'm here with Vero and we got a lot to get into. We haven't been on in about 10 days because there's been so much going on. We wanted to try to do one podcast to include everything, you know, that's been going on instead of having one and then something else come out the next day or the day after and we're not, and it's a little while to get into, you know, we there's so much going on there. I mean, you know, where do we start with all this?
And there hasn't been a dull moment in a while now.
No, I mean, it seems like when one thing ends, another you know, more corruption or more shenanigans pops up out of, you know, it's not out of nowhere, but it's just kinda it's like they're trying to get it all in by the end of the year so they can start in January, pretty much a clean slate.
Yep.
You know, and
Yeah, there's just, there's just a lot that's been going on thanks to our, our fellow citizens in Hall County. So it hasn't, hasn't been a dull
Oh, yeah.
past couple of months.
Yeah, and you can bank on it and you just hit on it. It's because of the citizens and people stepping up, going to the meetings, emailing the commissioners and doing things that this stuff's happening. This corruption's been going on for years. It's just now being brought to light.
Yep.
It's like the corruption with the planning commission. I've got the report posted in our Facebook group in its entirety. And they found between five, at least five and possibly seven separate meetings that were illegal. And they only went back a year.
Yeah.
Imagine if they went back two, three, four, five years or more. There's no telling how long this has been going on.
Yeah.
And I've heard rumblings of people saying the Board of Assessors and other groups having these meetings too with three or four in a room together. That don't mean they're doing anything wrong. They could just be in there chit chatting about the weather. But it does, just doesn't look good, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's, a lot of it's just optics. The, the optics, I mean, when you, when you got social media in today's age and people already have a lot of distrust in the government and institutions as a whole. And then you get a lot of pushback from local officials when, whenever you ask for more transparency and then you get caught doing something like this. It just, yeah, it's, it's not optics aren't good.
Well, and we're not talking about saying them at lunch together or, I mean, there's nothing wrong with a bunch of the commissioners or people that know each other go eat lunch together because if you're on something for this many years, naturally you can probably develop friendships. I mean, you know, and that's not what we're talking about, you know? Oh, we seen them eating at Texas Roadhouse or somewhere.
Yeah.
This is not what we're talking about.
And that's, and that, that totally, I mean, it's still, the office even on that too would look not great, but we're having dinner, you know, that's like plausible defense right there. Like we're just having dinner, we're having lunch, we're not, we're not doing anything.
Yeah, so if your wives are with them, say, hey, our wives are good friends or whatever, you know?
Yep.
But this ain't what, that's not what we're talking about. And they said the, the report was kinda telling that even as far up as Zach Prote knew about the meetings, which Zach denied in the report. But all the other people that they interviewed, the planning staff said that he knew about it.
Yeah. I mean, I would imagine, I think, I think the, the reports mentioned that Beth Garman, who, who's just recently resigned, had mentioned a couple of times where she had also mentioned to the commissioners that, hey, this, you know, we got too many commissioners in here, et cetera. And it just got brushed off or something like that. Like he's just sitting in, not participating or something like that. So I would, I would imagine she would have probably told her boss or her superior at that point.
Yeah, and then Katie tried to say, well, Beth wasn't assertive enough. Well, it wasn't Beth's job to be assertive. She's not their boss. They're not her boss. She alerted them to the situation and they just blew it off. Like, who cares?
Yeah.
Or made jokes like, oh, Frank's not here. Frank Sosby, it's his twin brother. You know, you know.
Do they, do they actually have a twin brother?
No, it's an inside, it was an inside joke they had with Castleberry and his wife before Castleberry died, according to the documents. I guess, I mean, I don't know. I don't want to speculate, but it was probably she, you know, misconstrued something and they just said, they may have played a prank on her or a joke or something. I don't know, but you know, it was enough to where they, somebody brought it up to the investigators, you know?
Right, right, right. Now, that, that makes sense.
And then they all go in there and they claim that they never had that training to let them know what the optics were for what was considered a legitimate meeting.
Yeah, I think you can't be really negligible to the, to the laws and claim negligence.
According to the Hall County documents and the investigators, everybody went to training in 2019. They've got their signature documents and, you know, that just tells you they either slept through the class.
Or just straight up lying.
And I don't think the county just went in there and sent people in their place or they falsified the documents to say they went to the training. You know, they went, they were trained. They just didn't pay attention. They thought that the Hall County's UDC would override state law.
Right.
That's what Braswell even said in the documents. You know, and the UDC and local code does not supersede state law. You can go further than state law, but you can't go less than state law. You can't, they were under the impression if they didn't vote on anything, then it wasn't considered an official meeting.
I got you. As far as the UDC goes, that's, that's just a development code. What is, are there, are there rules about how?
They've got things in there to where if they do do something wrong, that what their punishment will be and it goes into the outline.
And that's interesting. I thought it was just literally just a, a development code as far as, you know, you gotta be this far away. These are your setbacks. These are your variances and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I didn't, I didn't know that actually had anything to do with the planning commission and how they operate.
Yeah, it was supposed to have all the different clauses because a lot of stuff can go in on in these meetings besides voting. I mean, you can talk about a ton of things that can affect whether you approve a development or go against a development or whatever. And you know, and these people, from what I understand, I, I had the documents in front of me a couple, about a week ago and I can't find it anymore. But I think the first illegal meeting, you can get fined $1,000. Then it's 2,500 for the second. And then the third may be like 3,000 or 5,000. And then it just keep, it doesn't multiply more than the third level, but it can just
Keep adding to it.
Three through seven or three through 10, it could be $5,000 a whack or whatever. And that can end up in some big fines if that's what they choose the route to go.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that's gonna be a, a minimal amount over the, over the course of however many commission checks people have collected since then.
Yeah, no doubt.
Yeah.
And I just hope the county taxpayers don't have to pay those fines. Like they do when a, say a cop gets found for negligence with the shooting.
Yeah.
Taxpayers have to pay those fines.
Yeah. I wonder, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a good question. I wonder who would be responsible for paying those fines if there were.
See, the police union, they've got to set up where the taxpayers cover any of those fines that happen. Which is not, and the cops not, it doesn't come out of his pocket. Even though he loses his job and pension and everything, he's not actually paying any fines or whatever. And I'm wondering if that's the same way with these guys.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't doubt it.
Yeah, probably not. You know, it wasn't surprising and
But interesting enough, this, this past week, they had a last minute, they called a meeting last minute to talk about, or I guess, uh, vote on pushing the investigation further or whatnot. For 30, within 30 days, they gotta have a, another report, an investigation from the outside law firm.
This will be, this will be a hearing.
Right.
Point a third party like arbitrator or whatever.
Yeah, but it'll be publicly displayed as, if I'm not mistaken, right? Like all the evidence and everything.
All the evidence will be presented in public. They, that's why they held it Tuesday at three because everybody involved had till Tuesday at lunch to resign. If they didn't want it all this going public.
Yeah, that's interesting because you got, you got Stan Hunt, that's also running for office for the Board of Commissioners that hasn't resigned yet. So this is gonna be interesting.
With his lawyer, guns ablazing.
Yep, 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 yep. Him and Sosby were, were there in that meeting or in that hearing with their, with their attorney.
And it's very telling that Billy Howell, the only dissenter on the four to one vote, proceed with removing or punishing the assessors. He was caught walking out with Sosby in the hunt.
Yeah, I was, I was at that meeting. Billy, Billy was just walking out and they were just, you know, all right, it's over now. So let's walk out to that. I don't necessarily think they were walking out together, but I, I think they did speak to each other before Billy went further ahead. But yeah, I don't, you know, maybe like, not to squash that speculation, I'm sure there's something was going on, but I don't, also don't think they're dumb enough to be like, hey, you know, like, let's talk about this right here, right now before, after all this just happened.
Well, with the evidence in front of these people, I don't put nothing past them, honestly.
Yeah, yeah, he looked pissed.
You know, and what's funny is they are so why put the county through this when they've got your dad to write? And a lot of people
Typical politician, typical political thing where you're not gonna admit you're wrong, you know?
And one question that I've heard that's been going around wrong is I can't find my report from the general from the Attorney General either. I've I moved some documents around from from a backup drive to, to my computer and I must have, I moved too many things, I guess, but anyway, the Attorney General, everybody's saying the Attorney General's not gonna jump back in. They didn't do their job. They're, well, and the first ruling, which nobody liked, the first ruling, the Attorney General couldn't subpoena anybody. They couldn't subpoena records. All they could do was talk to the people involved. I mean, you know, and they found no wrongdoing because you knew there's all gonna go in there and lie or whatever, tell the same story or whatever. We know what went on most likely. But the Attorney General did say the spokesman that sent this or the lady that was in charge of the investigation said that this did not absolve them from any further actions in the other meetings that are being investigated by a third party. If the third party found out some wrongdoing, then they could jump back in if it was warranted.
So the AG only investigated the, the meeting in question that Joe filed for.
They couldn't investigate the others. It was only
Interesting.
The reason is, is because now they would have presented all those meetings to the Attorney General. At the same time, they could have investigated it. But they could only investigate the meeting that was reported to their office.
Interesting. I got you.
So now, if, if the county can't come to a solution, then the Attorney General can come in and do what they want to is what I'm assuming because they did say that those other meetings, at the time it was up to 10 meetings. Now the third party said it's five to seven. Definitely five and possibly seven. You know, I'd expect the Attorney General to come back in. There's a lot of people saying that they don't think the Attorney General's gonna do anything.
Yeah. Yeah, it's that, it's that first one that just kinda like brushed away, brushed off to the side that, you know, even though there were three people, three commissioners in that meeting.
No doubt.
You don't find any kind of wrongdoing in that as a whole. It doesn't matter what they were talking about, you know, that's, that's beside the point. Why are, why are three of y'all meeting with the planning director and the staff?
Right. Well, and I'm looking at it like next year, the new election cycle will start in January, February. Well, we got midterms coming up in November. Primaries in May. And the Attorney General is not, and he's already, Raffusberger, his office is already on the hot seat still from the voting, voting machines and the Trump election and all that. They're not gonna wanna write the vote, I don't think, especially since the Atlanta TV stations and radio stations have started picking the story up.
Yeah.
Then you throw the data center in on top of it. You know, because they did
Yeah, the, the December 11th meeting for the Board of Commissioners is gonna be a, a heavy one. You got the data center. The Cagle Mill Road, but then you also got the 5111 Wiener Highway on there too, that randomly came back up.
Yep.
Yep. So you got a, you got a bunch of hot ticket items on that, on that agenda on the December 11th.
Yeah, that's gonna be a two to three hour meeting anyway. And then you gotta have this meeting by November, by December 18th, I believe. And they gotta have it within 30 days unless they ask for an extension from the state. And my understanding is if the county commission needs more time, they can ask for an extension, but the defendants can't, you know, the ones being charged can't, the county can. And with the holidays coming up, you don't know what's gonna happen. But I think the county commissioner just want it over with, it done with. And when January rolls around, then they can take the holidays off. And then when early January gets here, they can start anew. The best they can.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking. But who knows?
How do you, how do you think that's gonna go?
Well, I think this hearing is gonna take between five and six hours.
This, uh, what, the 11th?
No, the one for the commissioners.
For the planning commission?
Planning commission because you've got to look at all the evidence they gotta present.
Yeah.
And you know, there's 14 pages in that report. That was just a synopsis. You know, they're gonna present all their notes. They're gonna have all the witnesses come and testify. They're gonna show all the videos. I mean, there's a lot
Yeah, we gotta bring popcorn, bring something to drink.
So if we can get us a liquor license and set up a table in the back.
Right there, yeah.
You know?
This is, this is something you gotta sell tickets for locally if you're involved.
If they have it at a time when people, I don't know if there's enough seats in that room to hold everybody.
Yeah, I mean, you know, surprisingly, there was a lot, I wouldn't say a lot, but it was a handful of people in that, in that meeting on Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, whenever that happened, last minute like that. Yeah. There's a surprisingly handful of people in there. I mean, a few of the, a few of the defendants were in there too, but yeah, it was interesting.
And I don't think they can start at no three or four o'clock in the afternoon and get it finished.
Yeah.
I think they may have to, my personal favorite would be, won't they have it on a Saturday so the public can come? Start at nine o'clock on a Saturday morning and go till it's finished.
Sell ta, you know, sell, sell, sell tickets, lower our taxes.
Yeah, make a little bit of things. I mean,
This is a little bit better than Jerry Springer.
Have a 50 50 raffle. Let us donate 20 bucks to the door and the county keeps 50 and the one lucky winner gets 50%.
Yeah, there you go.
Get a little bit of their money back.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. I like it.
I think that, how do I think it's gonna go? Oh goodness, I think they're all gonna be fired. And I think the planning staff, they're gonna have to clean house. Depends on how far they go. Could go all the way to Zach Prote. Could even go for as far as the county attorneys. I find it hard to believe that the county attorneys didn't know something.
Right.
Why didn't they stop it if they did know something?
Yeah.
And, or why didn't somebody just go over to the county attorney and say, hey, this is happening? What's gonna happen here? You know?
I wa, I wonder how much of this potentially gets tied back into some of the, some of the real estate companies here locally too. So like, you know, I'm not gonna name any names, but you, you guys know who I'm talking about, but not, not even just those companies too, but just, you know, specific, specific individuals that are involved in real estate and how much of that kinda goes back and
Well, you know, of course, when you got two, three, four of the people, you know, the, a lot of people tied to it either sell real estate or sell insurance with ties to the, one of the real estate companies. And you know, there's just a big ball of wax here.
Yep. Or they're a contractor.
Yeah, they're a contractor. You know, those like Frank Sosby's a construction contractor. And I'm not saying he's got any work from the county or anything. But when you're in construction and you're, I was in construction years, you get ties to a lot of these people and I'm not saying nobody did anything to fix. I mean, it's just, there's a lot of moving parts here.
Yep.
And I don't know what's going on and what, how do you think it's gonna, I think they're just gonna have to clean house.
I mean, I, from, from, uh, from a outside perspective, um, as a, as a resident of the county, none, none, none of this looks good for the, the county itself, but then like, you know, again, like the, the distrust that people already have with every, every establishment in this county at this point. So yeah, I think the best scenario here to kinda wash, for the county to wash their hands of that's, that, that distrust and actually show the public that they are working for the taxpayers. It's not just a little inside good old boy club and, or it's not a good old boy club anymore. And all, all the things to kinda right the ship at this point, I think you gotta clean house. Um, and, and it's not one of those things where you clean house and let stuff die down in a couple of years. You hire these people back or these people come back in, in different appointments. So like Richard Higgins.
Right.
You know, he, he was, he was voted out for a reason and then now you're appointing him to the Board of Tax Assessors, I believe.
Yeah.
So, you know, what, what's the point of that? Why is he back in the, in the swamp?
It was just like always, Billy Powell got his hands all over, you know?
And then, you know, and that's the other thing too. I mean, he's been, Billy's been uncontested in the last, what, two or three elections and he's been in there for a long time.
Years or something. I mean, you know, that's a long
Yeah, but then he's, he's, he, you know, he's involved in real estate. And he's also on a board or something like that for the Gainesville Hall Housing Authority or Development Authority or something to do with real estate. So it's like, it's like, how do you not, I mean, and, and it's not that they don't see it. I know they see the conflict of interest there. It's just like, hey, nobody knows about this. So you know, let me, let me fill my pockets up.
Well, and you look at Braswell, he's been on the
The chairman for the planning commission?
For 20 years, I think, and I think 18 of them or something is the chairman.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, we got to get term limits in on this stuff.
Yeah.
I think two terms is more than enough, you know? You can't get any, sometimes you just can't get anything done in one term, you know, especially if you're like running a pool and it's three against one. On most of the stuff, I mean, and I'm not just saying pool, I'm saying whoever takes his seat, if they're not, you know, you know, it's just gonna, you know, it takes time. I get it. Two terms is
Well, and that's the other thing too. Even if they do clean house, you still have the, the commissioners are still there. The, the people that appointed these people are still there. So, all right, let me just go find somebody else that's gonna
And I've heard a lot, and I've heard a lot of talk, I wanna get your opinion on this too. I know we haven't talked about it. A lot of talks going around about them trying to recall Billy Powell. And I just don't think they've got enough evidence or what they don't understand what it takes to recall somebody.
Right. You know, I mean, you gotta, you gotta have some pretty hard evidence that they, that they did something against the public interest, uh, or they benefited by doing something against public interest, or they violated their oath, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and then, and it, and it can't be opinions, obviously. It's gotta be some hard evidence. And then you gotta get, I think, a hundred solid votes from registered voters in his district to start that petition.
A hundred? I think that in Lula, I can't remember how many they had to get, uh, I'm see Joe Thomas, the mayor, they ended up about three votes shy because 10 of the people that signed it was not actually in the city limits of Lula.
Oh, I got you. Yeah. I think it's a hundred. I, I think it's a hundred, uh, but I know y'all would wanna get some more just in case some, some of them, uh, come up as disqualified, so.
They tell you to get 30% more than what you think you need.
Yeah, yep.
But I thought it may be a percentage of the population in that district. Like say if you got 5,000 people in the district registered to vote, then you might have to get 10% or something. I, I didn't know how it exactly worked, but
Think that at the, even, even then though, it's like that, that second part of it, you, you have to have some serious
Well, first you gotta get like a hundred, but then I think if you get enough to do that, then you gotta go back and get signatures again. And you gotta get more this time, I believe. I'm not sure. I can't remember exactly how it works, but you gotta get signatures twice.
Yeah.
And everybody has to be in the district.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think it's, it, I don't think it's gonna, it's gonna work out. I think we're just gonna have to wait it out till 2026 and
Best way is just to wait it out and vote him out of office instead of wasting all this time and resources on trying to recall him.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of people were actually surprised, uh, Stowe and Cooper voted in favor of that, uh, you know, the, the moving forward with the investigation and, and whatever else. But I'm, 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 well, I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, their, their elections are coming up next.
Yeah, no, that's what I was about to say. Cooper ain't stupid. She's on the hot seat already.
Yeah.
And no way she's gonna risk losing election even more in 2026. And Stowe's up in 2027, I believe.
But you know, that's the, that's the thing, man. Like if, if, if I had all these constant allegations come up against me and I, and I didn't do anything, I'd be like, you know what? That's fine. I'm done. I don't wanna, I don't wanna do this anymore. And, but, but clearly that, that's not the case here.
No.
Like, again, the optics, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just looking at the optics and, and commenting on it. I'm not making any allegations that so and so did anything wrong, but at the same time.
I mean, how arrogant can you think, I mean, do you think these people are? And you could tell by their responses in that report, they still don't think they did nothing wrong.
Yeah. Oh, no, no. I mean, they're not gonna admit guilt. That's, that's number one rule, number one in, in politics. You don't, you don't admit you did anything wrong.
Oh, yeah.
And that, and that's the thing. We got, we got politicians. I think, I think Gibbs is, is literally the only one. He's not a politician. He's literally up there to represent the people that voted for him. So that, that's why there's such a big discrepancy between how he treats people during So, that, that's why there's such a big discrepancy between how he treats people during. The meetings and actually gives them the time of day and, and, and all the things versus. The other, the other ones, and, you know, Cooper, I've, I've never seen her, at least so far, like, get, get irritated or, or. You know, be rude or anything like that, disrespectful towards anybody and, and during the meetings, uh, neither have I seen Billy do that, uh. Greg, not really either, but Stowe, but, you know.
He's never been a lifetime politician, but he's a preacher and not against preacher, but to be a good preacher, you gotta be. Good politician as well, because you gotta walk a lot of thin lines with different. Groups and factions and everything to go to these churches and go to these groups and, you know, I mean, it's just. They kinda go hand in hand, you know? And because when, it's just, that's just how it works in modern religion and, uh, politics has turned into a pseudo religion. By how people. You know, and it's just.
The, the other, the other, other three that I'd mentioned though too. At one point or another, so like Greg, I believe, people have an issue with the fact that he voted for, or he, he pushed through his own industrial. Uh, deal or something like that up three sixty-five, some warehouses, or he rezoned it, and I, I believe he didn't recuse himself at that, at that time.
And he did, some things got stuff passed through before he announced coming running for office, he did it and. Petition, the commission to get it through and then turn around and run for office right after it, you know, and it.
And then, and of course, you know, you got the real estate ties with Cooper and, uh, um, Powell. So. A, a lot of self-interests right there too, conflict of interest, self-interest, whatever you want to call it, and then, of course, um, the, the. Well, I'm not, again, I'm not gonna mention any, any names of companies or anything like that, get us in trouble. But anyways, um, yeah, uh, uh, you know, Gibbs is a retired, uh, fire chief, fire marshal. Just out there, you know, wanting to serve the people that voted for him.
Yeah, he's got a hardwood floor company, company as well, and he runs that event center, so I mean. There are not really not much that tied him into the political world.
Right.
You know, other outside.
I wonder, I wonder how much of, uh, the, the whole ordeal with Hall County and how they screwed over, um, first responders.
The firefighters.
A decade ago or something like that, I wonder how much of that had to do with, uh, Gibbs running potentially, you know?
I think it had a little bit to do with it.
Yeah. And that, that was Higgins' whole, whole debacle, right?
No, yeah, they and. Well, you know, and I know a lot of the people that were involved back then that tried to tell them, look. This ain't right, it ain't legal, you're going, you know. And I'm glad it finally worked out on the firefighter's behalf, they should have never had to go through that meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not, it wasn't just the firefighters too, though, was it?
Lot of the county employees, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was the sheriff's department too as a whole.
Yeah, it was a lot of people and, you know, when you gotta cut, you don't cut. People's pay and retirements and all that, you just don't do it, I mean.
Or like pensions too.
Yeah.
I think that was the big one, it was like, what, the, the retirement aspect of all of this was, uh, what was really kinda screwy about this whole thing.
Yeah. But yeah, I think we just need to drop all this. Recall vote and what, you know, let's get good candidates to run, even if you don't recall them, they're gonna appoint somebody.
Yeah.
They're not gonna have.
Well, yeah, I mean, election season starts in, in January, we're almost, we're only a little over a month away now, so, got holidays to go through and then.
I think the county usually has their qualifications then.
In March, right?
And how to qualify and all their fees and everything updated by February at the latest. Because that gives you. Most of February, March, April and early May, uh. Campaign, I mean, that's plenty of time in a town like this.
Yeah, well, I, I sure hope somebody, uh, picks up the. The, the responsibility to give, uh. Norton, uh, or, uh, at least a, a contested. Yeah, for the city, for Gainesville City, yeah, I hope I'm not the one that's gonna have to end up doing that.
Yeah, me too, I mean, somebody gotta run against, you know, and. They just don't like it that they don't have a seat at the table anymore because of retirements and deaths, you know? They've got a whole young city council in there. You know? And they got a good city council, I mean, it's fair, it's equity, I mean, it's got minorities on it, it's got. Longstanding citizens, I mean, it's got, you know. And the county needs to get more people involved and, and I get it. Not everybody can go to meetings at three o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah. Then again, like, you know, Fa- Facebook and social media do, do a good job now, you got, you got pretty much reporters that. Aren't reporters by career, but at the same time, better, probably better than actual reporters, uh. That are, that are out there participating and, 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 you know, do, doing the legwork and, uh. Yeah, so I mean, I, yeah, I can't wait to get Jody on here just to kinda talk about. All of this with her.
Oh, yeah.
And then, and again, not, not to endorse anybody just yet, but Tyler does a great job of going through the, the. Uh, agenda items coming up and, um, looking at the discrepancies with the, with the master plan and, and the UDC. And this is just for the county, this isn't for the city of anybody, but still.
Then Tyler's running in Greg Poole's district.
Right, that's a, that's a very highly contested, uh, uh, seat right there, you got a bunch of people running for that one, so.
Yeah, Stan Hunt who should drop out. You think.
Yeah, yeah, but that's the thing, if you, if you drop out, you're admitting you did something wrong, and again, I don't, I don't see that happening, so. Pen- pending investigation, something comes out, even then, even, even then, I don't know that. He would drop out because, again, it, that, that's admitting you did something wrong.
Yeah.
I would, I would admire him more and give him a little bit more respect if, if he did resign and then just drop out and say, look. Bro, you're, you're sixty plus, you know, or, I, I, at least you look sixty plus. Like, go retire, go do something else, why are you still hanging on to this, this power trip at this point?
We've got three good candidates still running, you got.
Yeah.
Steve Gailey's gonna get in as soon as the new year starts, he'll file his paperwork.
Yep, and you got Shannon too.
Commission and, you know.
Yeah, Shannon in that race too, right?
Huh?
Yeah, Shannon in that race.
And Tyler Crawford.
You got, you got.
We got three.
Good replacements, yeah, some potential good replacements for, uh, for Greg.
And with all three of those candidates, they don't have exactly the same visions, but. They're close enough to where.
Yeah.
They're not a bad choice in the bunch, for the most part.
How, how old is Gailey?
Steve, sixty-six, sixty-seven or something, you know?
Not, not to be ageist, but again, like, go, go retire, bro, go, go do something else, let, let the younger generation.
Three for twenty years and twenty-five years probably and him and my family and. He just, he's running because he's sick of what's going on with the county, he need.
Yeah, and, and that's fine, I'm sure he's got great intentions and, and all the things, but again, uh, again, not to be ageist, but let, let the younger folks start taking over. Cause they need to be the ones leading the way. For the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, and then another set and another set, et cetera, like, you're, you're sixty, you know, go, go enjoy retirement, go do something.
Yeah, and then we got, hopefully we get more people running in District One too, because nothing against Cory. I think he's gonna be a great candidate, but if it's Cory, Mark Turner and.
Cooper.
Cooper. There's not enough people to keep Cooper out of a runoff, you know, if you got four or five candidates, then nobody probably gonna get fifty percent of the vote.
Yeah.
Saying that's the key. And District Three, if Stan stays in it, you get, if you can just keep him out of the top two, then you got a whoop. You know? And. I'd like to see more people get in that district to kinda level the vote out a little bit, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and that's, that's District One, right?
Yes.
Cooper, right, okay.
And I heard Jill Cooper was maybe gonna throw her hat in the ring, that was a few months ago. But I think. I think her last name could probably hurt her, because even though they're not related. You know?
If they think it's the same Cooper.
You know how people are, man, they just. And I, I mean, and I'm not trying to discourage her from running in, in the least bit, I think she'll be a great candidate. You know, cause she's got a big dog in the hunt. And. You know, so. But it's gonna be interesting to see how this plays out, they're gonna, they're gonna have to announce a date. Soon, you know, and get all this worked out, and then I think, after all this is worked out, you may see more candidates come forward.
Yeah, maybe.
Because.
That'd be good though, I think, I think the, the, the more the merrier, I think it gives people more options to, to kinda choose from. But at, at the same time, I think people still have to, you know, do a little bit more research and, and even call the candidates and, and ask them the questions. And actually understand what they're trying to accomplish, instead of, oh, I saw a lot of signs for this person, so I guess I'm, I'm gonna vote for that.
Yeah, no, and I think a lot of it might have to do with who these people appoint to the new, if they do clean house.
Yeah.
Who they appoint, if they appoint more of the same old, same old.
Yeah.
It could rile more people up and say, look, enough's enough. You know? Sorry, my phone's ringing, stupid spam calls. But, you know. So, it's gonna be interesting to see how that goes, and I hope more people get in, it's gonna cost about. Like twelve, it'll probably cost between a thousand and thirteen, twelve, thirteen hundred dollars to run for office. I think it was like a thousand and seventy-six dollars last week, I mean, last year to qualify.
You gotta raise that much, or you just have to?
Are to qualify.
Oh, okay.
And if you can't afford it, you can sign a paupers affidavit where they waive the fees for you.
Oh, okay.
But naturally, you gotta show your income and stuff, proving you can't afford it, or everybody. Everybody just sign a paupers affidavit and be done with it.
Yeah. That's a, that's an interesting concept, um. What, what else have we got this week?
Uh. We're gonna try to get a few people on before the eleventh, uh. To talk about Kegel Road and the implications of it and the data center, hopefully next week. Uh, but I'm gonna try to get one more of these in before Thanksgiving holidays. And then. Another thing's coming up, that just coming up, it's been pushed off, is. On the county meeting, on the commission meeting on January eighth. Brian Rochester of Rochester Associates is trying to put a. RV.
Park. Oh, yeah, boat, yeah, boat storage, four hundred slips, yeah.
Don't have, be a big development at Losable Highway, uh. Off Sardis Road, I mean, why don't we even wait till the fricking bypass gets put in through there and finished, you know? Want thirty townhomes. Four hundred RV slips and boat slips. It doesn't say how many of each, but I think it'll probably be. Only about ten or twenty boat slips, cause the core don't give those out a lot, you know?
I don't, I don't think slips on the actual lake though, I think it's just, uh, like a boat and RV storage.
Boat and RV storage, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they're like actual slips on a, like a dock slip or anything like that.
I know the lakes right there too, so I mean, I didn't know for sure, cause it don't say on the plans.
Yeah, no, 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 it's, it's not gonna be that.
They don't have sewer. Or anything, there's gonna be three community, huge community septic tanks there.
Yeah.
Then you're gonna have swimming pools and you're gonna have to have retainage ponds on that land somewhere.
I wonder where he found that, that, uh, application, cause I'm trying to look it up and I don't, I don't see it on the January eighth agenda or anything at the moment.
Crawford posted this yesterday online and I was kinda shocked, cause I'd not heard anything about it.
Yeah, cause I know exactly where that, where that is, Carl drives like right up the road from me, so, um. And, and, and guess what, I, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that is a property that is listed by. Norton.
That wouldn't shock me.
And I believe it's, uh, yeah, but I believe it's Will Cobb, if I'm not mistaken too, let me check.
Oh, got that Will Cobb name again too, huh? And. But since Rochester sold their company to that huge outfit a few years ago, Brian ran in developing. Days and anything he's bought in front of the county or the city, he's pretty much got approval. And what he's done, that was supposed to have been a bigger, more townhomes, but since they put in the. Moratorium where they, you couldn't bring anything in front of the planning commission. Or the commission that was, had more than thirty homes or units in it. He shrunk it down.
Oh, never mind, I take that back, sorry, I take that back, so that, that, there's another lot right fairly close to. Where Rochester is proposing this one that. Will Cobb has, uh, listed for, for sale. So, yeah.
They re- redone it to where thirty, you know, and if it gets approved, then if there's still a moratorium, he'll do another one for thirty more or whatever. I mean, that's why when you put these more.
I mean, looking at loopholes, that's it, for the time being, yeah.
Got, uh, say none, none except single family homes, that's it.
Yeah. And that, now, this, this whole planning commission, uh, suspension and, and all the debacle with the planning. Uh. And zoning folks and whatnot, I, I wonder how much they're gonna actually get done in that six month moratorium, like, I, you know. How do we establish certain rules for these, uh, high density rezonings, et cetera, et cetera?
From what I understand, they hadn't even started working on the UDC redoing it.
Yeah. It might, it might just be like, alright, we're just gonna do this just for the public's sake, we're not actually working on this.
After all this and all the language they're trying to blame on the UDC, it's gonna have to be redone anyway. When you got all.
I mean, honestly, it, it, it needs to be redone, if you, if you think about it, it's, and, and I think it's, this is one of those, this is one of those. I don't know, like, I, I, I don't know if it's the, the right terminology, but the chicken or the egg, because. You would think you would want. Developers, engineers. Local zoning and planning, um. Attorneys, uh, developers, contractors, et cetera, to be the folks to, to actually like drive the UDC. In a, in a certain way, cause they understand a lot of the. The complications with it and, you know, the, the, the. The issues with our, our previous UDC, well, the, or the lack thereof, actually. But anyways, you, you would think you would want people like that to do it, and I think to a certain extent you do, but then again, you have these, these. Bad optics of. Developers paying off potentially and cutting backdoor deals and like the, the commissioners being involved and so. And it, it, all of that just looks terrible, terrible, and then the entire UDC that they did. You go back and look at who they mentioned in the, uh, you know, friends of Hall County that. I guess, uh, helped drive and, and develop the, the current UDC. It's filled with those people, it's, it's filled with the, the good old boy swamp, if you will.
Yeah.
Um, the, the, the attorneys, the contractors, the, the developers, um. Yes, it's, it's, it's just, again, it's just such a terrible look that, uh. I don't know if they, if they don't notice it or what, like, I don't know what the, what the issue is.
Cause they've never had anybody put back on it before.
Yeah.
And if they did, they would give them some bull crap excuse and then the people would just drop it, oh, okay, that sounds plausible, and they'd just drop. You know? I mean, the days, I think, of them approving stuff, like a few. I mean, the days, I think of them approving stuff, like a few years, a couple of years ago, they had one meeting, you had. Like fifty or sixty people in there with pitchforks and they still approved. You know, big subdivision down in South Hall, you know?
Yeah.
I think they're learning day, that's, the days of that stuff may be over, hopefully. Or they're not gonna be.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a tough battle to, to really fight the developers when you really think about it, because. When you, when you have costs of land that's continuously creeping up due to inflation. Um, it doesn't, you, you can't financially. Makes sense to build single family homes anymore because. It hits your pockets and I'm sure, I'm sure there's some leeway there. I'm sure you can still make a pretty good buck. But it's not as juicy as you throw these townhomes on a point one acre, point one five acre lot. Whereas you have to give up. A quarter or, 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 you know, three, a third of an acre or half an acre per single family home. Um. So, yeah, it's, that's, that's the tough part in my opinion. And, cause you, then you can't make it affordable, you know? I mean, you're, you're easily pushing into the three hundreds, four hundreds, five hundred thousand dollar. Which is, you know, five hundred thousand dollars today is the new, you know, or the, the old two fifty is the new five hundred now, so.
Like we talked about a few weeks ago is how that. The mayor in Flannery Branks said, I just can't believe all these people are mad because we're putting in. Approved the subdivision with six hundred or seven hundred thousand dollar homes. Well, those people in the subdivision next to it, they're, that's a nice subdivision. Those used to be. Two hundred thousand dollar homes, you know, which were pretty nice houses. Now they're three or four hundred thousand. Those people's taxes have doubled. They can't pay the taxes. You go in fifty or sixty. Three quarter a million dollar homes, that means their houses are gonna be five hundred thousand dollar homes.
Yeah, and I mean, you're, you're, you're forcing people out.
You know, prices people out of their land.
Yep, and, and you create a lot of forced sellers in the market too, so I don't, I don't know how, if that's a good thing or not, but. When people's wages don't kind of keep up, um, and I, you know, I feel like we're kind of starting to see little trickles of it throughout our, our, our. Not even just the, the city or in, in the county, but throughout the entire country where. People are starting to have to force sell some of their, their properties. Um, cause they can't, can't even afford the, uh, the, the insurance or the taxes on it anymore.
Well, something. Something's gonna have to.
Yeah, something's gonna break.
We've got more homes on the market now than we've had in the last decade.
Yeah.
You know, and homes are sitting on the market longer now than they have since two thousand fifteen. It's a minimum and sometime in some areas, two thousand nine, when the housing market. Romble. Back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. So, you know, something's fixing to get.
Still have these, uh, corporations that are coming in and buying them for, for cheap though. And that, and that's the other thing. Is like, you get, you, you're gonna get this correction, but is that really gonna be a good thing? Because then, again, you're still gonna have that issue of. Yeah, you're still gonna have that issue of corporations coming in and scooping everything up, cause they got unlimited money to, to, to do it.
We're gonna be maxed out. They're not gonna keep sitting on these losing properties. They're gonna have to start selling.
Yeah.
And that's why it's not always a bad thing when the corporations. Are buying up this stuff, because at least it keeps. Money moving, people moving into homes and renting homes and you don't want them sitting there lapidating is what I'm saying.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I, I, I totally understand that, but that's, that's again, what I'm. Trying to say that too is that's one of the reasons in my opinion that housing is so expensive is cause you have this artificial buyer that's constantly buying up. Or, or, or this buyer that has endless amount of money. That can just go in there and keep buying and keep buying and keep buying.
Yeah.
But eventually, like you said, something's gonna have to break though too, cause guess what? You're, they're, they're paying four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars for these houses. Expecting X amount of return and guess what? People can't even afford to rent your house anymore, so.
Right.
You're, you're, yeah, something's gonna break one way or the other and, uh, you know, I could see a lot of people moving in. Together and to, you know, back in with family.
Right.
And kind of going back to that nuclear family model, uh, everybody kind of contributes and. Makes that burden a little bit less for, for everybody, so.
And one good thing is, you know, these corporations that are doing that, they're borrowing against their assets. They're, they just don't have all this flush cash sitting around.
Yeah, it's just leverage, leverage on top of leverage.
And when they start losing, they're eventually gonna get caught. Holding those notes in their hand, where they're just gonna have to get rid of them, you know?
And you got another. You got another printing event potentially that's gonna happen.
Oh, yeah.
Massive stimulus, massive bailouts, massive everything, so, yeah.
That's what happened in two thousand eight, when Clinton made these banks start loaning a hundred. To a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and twenty percent of the value of property. Giving mortgages to people that couldn't qualify and wasn't. Cause everybody has their own home. You know? You put them in these homes and they get these big balloon notes where their payments are three hundred dollars a month for the first five years. Then all of a sudden, they've either got to refinance it and pay off the balloon note. Or. Pay off the balloon note with cash. They can't do it, so they lose the house.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and that's what happened in two thousand eight and. We're fixing to see that happen again, I think, but it's gonna be in a different dynamic, because it's not gonna be the. Balloon mortgages that we've seen. It's gonna be. People are just gonna be caught. Like builders used to get when they'd build homes. And they used to sell them in thirty days and they start sitting for ninety and a hundred and twenty days, you know? They can't keep paying interest on those loans till they sell, so they've got to fire sale them.
You know, that, what the crazy thing too is, uh, this, and I feel like this is something new in this market right now too, where they're building. Full-on communities, full-on subdivisions and stuff. Strictly to rent. Strictly to, to just to lease and it's not, they're not for sale, they're not for anything. It's just straight up. Hey, we're building all these, cause we're gonna run them out. So it's like little mini apartment complexes, but with townhomes instead, so.
Yeah, and I don't think they understand the, I mean, I'm sure they do, but they don't. Renters do not keep up with the property. I mean, the. Take care of it.
Yeah. And there, there's a lot that I'm, I'm, I'm kind of keeping an eye on too, that. People bought them once they've been built and, and they're kind of just sitting around. They're not filling up as quickly as they were just. Couple of years ago, um. So, yeah, I think, I think a lot of these investors are gonna start to feel the heat a little bit too, when they can't keep up with the, with the note. Potentially, but who knows? You know, I've been, I've been saying this for the last like three, four years. Uh, uh, it's, it, real estate's just so liquid that it takes a while for things to kind of.
Yeah.
Fall into place and, and the dominus just potentially starts to fall and stuff, so who knows?
And one thing that may hurt them too is. I had a friend who just moved to Saint Mary's a couple of years ago, about eighteen months ago. She owned a condo off. Pr- uh, Lee Dan Road. Near Hidden Hollow over there. She didn't own the land, she just owned the building that sat on the slab. So when she sold the, there was a clause in there that when she sold the. Townhome, a percentage of it went to the actual landowner. She got the key.
Yeah, yeah, that's like, like mobile homes work too, the trailers.
Yeah.
You own the lot or you, you own the, the actual. The motor vehicle or the trailer itself, but you don't own the lot. And so you still pay lot rent, which is pretty much a property tax.
Yeah.
Everyone, which is, which is.
I mean, it was crazy. When I talked to her, she said, oh, I cleared. She paid like eighty thousand for it and sold it for like two twenty, which was a crazy, you know, it was a really nice townhome, but. I said, dang, I thought you would have gotten a little more. And she goes, no, I had to give, she said, I only own the actual building itself. My.
Yeah, that's weird.
You know, not the land.
That's, yeah, and there, there's a few, few subdivisions, uh, or communities like that here in Hall County that I know of. And there, it's just, it's a weird concept. I don't know why anybody would buy a house like that ever.
I didn't own the land with it.
Yep.
I mean, who's to say that dude just can't come in and say, see you?
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't buy anything that the county don't own, that.
Well, yeah.
We're, we're, yeah.
The county or the state, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Well, Chris, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to call it here, um.
Yeah.
I gotta go eat dinner. Go take care of the baby.
So anything else? We've done nothing else we need to get into? I think we covered a good bit and.
Yeah, I think, I think more than anything, I think, you know, we got, we, um, uh, the eleventh. Fairly around the corner. I know we got Thanksgiving next week, so maybe, uh, the week after, let's try to get Jody on. Uh, I know, I know she's got a lot of, uh. Energy and time invested in the, in the data center project, but then also Cagle Mills too, which is like right down the road from her.
Yeah.
So.
We'll try to get Jody on for Cagle Road and. Cause I don't know if she can do it next week, cause she's got family lives out of town and they come in for the holidays and stuff and. You know, but. She told us she'll try her best to get on and we'll try to have her on and. Uh. Next week, we'll try to have a show out by Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday. And then we can.
We got anything coming up that, that we need to cover next week though?
We'll see if they announce a meeting or whatever, if there's anything that comes out. We may not have one, but we may. It just depends on.
Yeah, cause I think it's might be a little uneventful, uh, week, next week with, uh, with Thanksgiving coming up.
Yeah, so.
Let's see if we get any more resignations or anything, but like you said, I think there, there was a, if there was a deadline to resign and nobody else has resigned yet, then.
Yeah, there is a deadline, I think Tuesday at twelve o'clock.
Yeah.
So. All right. I appreciate it, Vero, and we thank y'all for listening and we'll be back, if not next week, definitely the week after Thanksgiving.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yep.
All right, see you guys.
All right, thanks.